Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
And with that, I'm going to call to order the Weaver City Council Meeting of April 13th, 2009. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Jerry Womble.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry. And Lena Rotola.
Here.
And Councilmember Dean Goke is absent this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 23rd, 2009?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to zero with one abstention by Lena Rotola.
Thank you. We have two proclamations and ceremonies tonight. We have the Broadridge Sixth Grade Essay Contest and then the Weaver 2020 Planning Commission, or Planning Academy Graduation. So I'll come on down to the podium. So I'd like to welcome all the parents and family members and the sixth graders here for the essay contest. I'd like to ask Dave from Broadridge to please step forward. And we have two guests that are going to also congratulate the students tonight. We have Jerry Pfeifer, Congressman Ed Perlmutter's office. So Jerry, could you please come up? And we have Sue Schaefer from the Colorado House Representatives. It'd be nice to Sue. She's voting tomorrow on House Bill 1327, so. And last but not least, Denise Balkis is going to read the names off, say a few words about Weaver 2020. I'm sorry, Dave's going to start. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank the City Council and Mayor Tulio for having us down again to do our sixth annual essay contest. I'd also like to thank the Jefferson Foundation and Mona Sandoval for helping to sponsor this contest. Oh, thank you. Helping to sponsor this contest again this year, along with my company, Broadridge. This year here, we had 288 sixth graders participate this year for this essay contest from all the seven schools that will feed Wheat Ridge High School. So I'd like to do our announcement names for this year's contest winners. So when you hear your name, please come up. First person we have, also before I forget, I want to thank Congressman Perlmutter's office for coming out and also going to give you guys letters of commendation for participating in this year's essay contest. The first person we have is Johnny Bushway from Pennington Elementary. She's here. Next we have is Candace Farron from Color Strand.
Which one's Candace?
You are. You Johnny? How you doing? Congratulations.
Congratulations, John.
You guys stay up here. We're going to take pictures afterwards. Thank you. Next one we have is Morgan, I think it's Dash from Maple Grove Elementary. I believe she had to go to outdoor lab, so we'll get this over to her. Next we have is Monique Pollak from Willmore Davis. Next one we have is Devin Frazier for Prospect Valley. Next from Vivian, we have Baylin Brown. Congratulations. And the overall winner for this year's essay contest from Stobe Elementary, which is Joey Rubano. Here? No, Joey. That's all right. All righty. Thank you very much. Let's get everybody get these kids a good hand.
We're going to go ahead and take a second if you want to take some photographs of your, of the students. We're going to have everybody stand together here and you can take a few photographs. So once again, I'd like to thank Broadridge and Dave and House Rep. Sue Schaefer and Jerry Pfeifer, Pfeifer for coming tonight. Now we'll move on to the Weaver 2020 Planning Academy Graduation, and I'll introduce Denise Balkis from Weaver 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're happy to be here tonight with another class. This is a class of 20, and not everyone was able to make it tonight. I will read all the names. But this brings the total number of graduates over the, from the past three years to 65. So our goal is to lobby council, to support council, and hopefully to create a little excitement in the community. This year's class was really interesting to me. They represented people who are new families that have moved over from the Highlands. We have somebody who was in high school. We have, you know, people who have lived in Wheat Ridge all their life. And we also have, we had a lot of people that were involved in the green building industry, about four or five people in the class. So you can see they really represented everything that's, you know, going on in the world and in our region. So a really good class. They want to be politically active. We talked about a lot of issues and generally very positive upbeat on the city of Wheat Ridge. So I was, it was my pleasure to work with them. So Mayor, if you want to do the honors, and if the class could line up and we'll take a picture also when we get done. Reeve Abbott, I don't think Reeve is here tonight. Yvonne Boyle. Do you want to say anything?
No.
No? Amy Tyndall. I don't think Amy's here. Susan Dyke. Chad Har. Carol and Ralph Hughes. Joyce J. Tom Mears. Betty Jo Page. And Jeanette Ray, who was not able to make it tonight. Francisco Reyna, who also was not able to make it. Carol Roland. Dave Schroeder. Floyd Sakia. And Bobby Verena, who is not here tonight. Jennifer Walter. James Williams, who is not here. And lastly, Lynn Waddell. Okay, thank you.
So congratulations to our sixth grade essay student winners and also our Weaver 2020 Planning Academy graduates. We'll move on to public comment. I think we have one person to speak tonight, Lisa. Please step forward and give us your name and address and spell your last name or your city and or your address.
My name is Lisa Faust, F-A-U-S-T, 2985 J Street, Wheat Ridge. I'm here, I'm the owner of A New Way to Life Pet Sitting here in Wheat Ridge, and this is my dog Cedar. She wrote a book about pets going green. And we're one of the vendors participating in an event that we're here to tell you about tonight. We want to invite citizens in Wheat Ridge and all the surrounding areas to the First Annual Wheat Ridge Green Business Expo. It is sponsored by Enterprise Wheat Ridge and Applewood Business Association. This free event takes place on Tuesday, April 28th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:30, and it will be held at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. Booths include vendors from a wide variety of businesses. It is a great place to find information about green products, ideas for weatherizing homes, pet care, and promoting businesses and Wheat Ridge in general. There'll be food, door prizes, and time for networking. It's a great place to shop for Mother or Father's Day and to see what Wheat Ridge is doing to go green. More info is available at www.ewetridge.com or on the City of Wheat Ridge website, or it's also on, showing on Channel 8. Council members, please consider this your personal invitation to join us on April 28th. We look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak under public comment tonight on nothing, on any item not on the agenda? Seeing that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight to the agenda? So the agenda will stand as published. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments remain to the subject. Item one is Council Bill 10-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Rotola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 10-2009, an ordinance providing for the approval of a change of zoning from Commercial 1, C1, and Residential 2, R2, to Plan Commercial Development, PCD, and for approval of an outline development plan for the property located at 10403 West 44th Avenue. Case number WZ0807, IRPINI-A. Executive summary. The applicant requests approval of a change of zoning from C1 to, and R2 to Plan Commercial Development and for the approval of an outline development plan. The subject's property is located at 10403 West 44th Avenue. The purpose of the zone change is to allow a custom cabinetry showroom and office and other limited commercial use in an existing residential structure. This applicant has been processed following the new outline development plan procedure of providing more graphic and written information upfront. If approved by City Council, the final development plan may be approved administratively concurrent with review of the building permit. Planning Commission gave a recommendation of approval with conditions in the public hearing held on February 5th, 2009.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 10-2009 will be assigned ordinance number 1439.
I need to swear everyone in who's speaking tonight on this agenda. And please stand and raise your right hand if you are planning on speaking tonight. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter?
Do.
Thank you. Move on to staff report.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jeff Hurt of the Community Development Department. I'd like to note that all posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore there is jurisdiction to hear this case. So this is case number WZ0807, request for a rezone from Commercial 1 and Residential 2 to Plan Commercial Development. And just to get some context, the subject property is located at basically in the northwest corner of 44th Avenue and Miller. So this is 44th just west of Kipling. And briefly, as far as existing conditions on the property, the property is about just under 15,000 square feet. Currently, as I said, zoned C1 and R2, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The existing structure is an approximately just under 4,000 square foot residential structure on this lot. So the zoning is split zoned, basically. So essentially, the eastern half of this property is zoned C1, Commercial 1, and the western half is R2, Residential 2, which, as you might imagine, presents pretty significant challenges to making improvements on this property. Onto some photographs. So this is looking at the subject property looking north. This is looking east with the subject property in the foreground. This is looking towards an adjacent commercial and residential use. And looking west toward duplex adjacent with 44th on the left. This is south across 44th. So south of 44th is a multifamily residential complex. And then last photo, this is actually with basically one street north of 44th on 44th Place, showing that there's two duplexes adjacent to the north. So the applicant has proposed a custom cabinetry showroom and office. Really, all the work that's being done, modifications are interior in the building, pretty minimal site modifications in terms of any type of change in the layout. And, but the bottom line really is that in order to do what they request, they will need a zone change to Plan Commercial Development. And the outline development plan, which sets forth sort of all the standards and the building footprint and things like that, really reflects existing conditions with some landscaping modifications to the site, you know, striping of the parking lot, things like that. The uses in the outline development plan are generally pretty low-impact non-residential uses, professional office showroom, live-work units. We wrote in so it would be able to be converted back to single-family, which is what it was. Development standards, pretty low-impact as well, generally reflect the R2 district in terms of setbacks, building heights, things like that. And then there's some non-residential standards related to parking landscaping. I won't go into detail on those. Architecture, they have done some pretty significant upgrades to the facade of the structure, particularly the south facade. And on to the land use itself in terms of its compliance with our comprehensive plan and subarea plan. It is very consistent with these plans. First off, the comprehensive plan calls for transitional residential on the site, which sets forth small retail, professional services, live-work units. And then also, this property is within the Fruitdale Subarea, which also calls for similar type uses, also encouraging commercial development and reuse of the existing residential properties on 44th for a commercial. So these are the criteria that staff uses to form a recommendation. I'm not going to run through each one of these, but they are analyzed in your report. And as clerk said, Planning Commission did recommend approval on February 5th, 2009. There were some conditions with that approval, and the applicant has modified their plans to comply with those conditions and should be reflected in your report. Staff does recommend approval of the outline development plan or rezoning for the following reasons. First, that proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive and Fruitdale Subarea Plan. Second, the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area as a low-impact non-residential use. And third, the proposed zone change will not adversely impact public health, safety, or welfare. With the following two conditions. First, the applicant must receive a certificate of occupancy to use the building commercially, basically, which may include an application for an additional building permit for interior modifications. And second, the applicant must receive a business license to operate the business on the subject property. And that concludes my presentation. I will open it up to questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything to add to the presentation tonight? Thank you. Let the record show the applicant said no. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on Agenda Item Number One tonight? Seeing that, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Any questions or discussion by council? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Are motions in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2009, case number WZ0807, a request for approval of a zone change for Commercial 1 and Residential 2, Plan Commercial Development, and for approval of an outline development plan for property located at 10403 West 44th Avenue on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the Fruitdale Subarea Plan. The proposed, two, the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area, has a low-impact non-residential use. Three, the proposed zone change will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare, with the following conditions. One, the applicant must receive a certificate of occupancy for a commercial use to operate the business, which may include application for an additional building permit and an interior modification. Two, the applicant must receive a business license to operate the business.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Stites?
Just real fast, if this passes, I would like to thank you for bringing a business to Wheat Ridge, and I'd also like to welcome you to Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Councilmember Berry?
I just wanted to say that facade improvements look great, and I think they really add to that area.
Councilmember Rotola?
And I also would like to add that I went by it, and it is, it's absolutely marvelous. Great work. It is an improvement on 44th Avenue. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Langworthy?
And I, as well, would like to extend my congratulations for you working on that property to make it look nice. I just kind of, I mean, I'm sure you might probably already be aware, but the Compass Monastery School right there on Miller does create a little bit of a traffic issue during certain parts of the day. So as long as you're kind of aware of that, that would be my only comment, because it gets to be tricky right there at 44th and Miller, to get in and out of your houses and other property.
Can we have a motion for approval, seconded? Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item two is Council Bill 11-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 11-2009, an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 26 concerning residential density in planned development district, ZOA 0901. Executive summary. At the July 7th, 2008 City Council Study Session, council directed staff to move forward with the list of proposed short, mid, and long-term zoning code amendments. The attached ordinance represents one amendment from that list. The attached ordinance proposes amendments to the regulations for maximum residential density to planned development, specifically the planned residential development, the PRD, the planned mixed-use development, PMUD districts. Staff has also proposed related revisions to the planned hospital, PHD district. Currently, the maximum density in any planned development district is 16 dwellings per, 16 units per acre. For Section 510.1B, the city's charter, the maximum density in any zone district is 21 dwelling units per acre. The proposed ordinance matches the charter-based maximum residential density for the PRD, the PMUD, and the PHD districts. The Planning Commission reviewed this code amendment at a public hearing held on February 5th, 2009, and gave a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 11-2009 will be assigned ordinance 1440.
Move on to staff presentation. Please state your name and your position with the city.
Thank you. And for the record, Jeff Hurt. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. And for the record, all posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore there is jurisdiction to hear this case. So this is case number ZOA 0901 regarding residential density and planned developments. And just a little background on planned developments. Basically, each planned development is its own zone district that sets forth its own allowed uses, development standards, building footprints, things of this nature. Each one has to go through a public process in order to get adopted, essentially as a rezoning. And just one example of a planned development, there's all kinds of supporting documentation with these plans. This particular one is the only planned mixed-use development in the city that hasn't been built, but it's located at the corner of 38th and Pew Street. So just an illustration of some of the elevations with an outline development plan, and then a site plan going along with that planned development. And just to get a sense of how many properties in the city have this zoning, all the properties outlined that are yellow, outlined in red encompass all the planned developments in the city. We'll hone in on the specific ones that have residential components too here in a second. So it's important to note, before we jump into the residential density discussion, in the city charter, which supersedes the zoning code, basically, there's a maximum of 21 dwelling units per acre in any zone district. But in the current code, the three planned developments that address residential density are planned residential, planned hospital, and planned mixed-use. Those have a maximum of 16 dwelling units per acre. And as far as a
And as far as a base zone district, the R3 zone district is the highest density at 12 dwelling units per acre. And here, just looking citywide at planned developments that have residential components, just for reference, in yellow are the planned residential developments, and the blue is a planned hospital development, which is exempla, and the red is the only planned mixed-use district, which is, I don't know if you can see the cursor, but on the far east corner of the city at 38th and Depew. So as far as the rationale for why this amendment was brought forward to you all, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy is an adopted document that does set forth recommendations for density, higher-density allowances at strategic locations. For example, the transit-oriented development area, TOD, where the light rail line is going to come in, the gold line, and then, for example, potentially around Wadsworth Boulevard. And really throughout this document, it's stated, but it does say in a couple spots, for instance, that higher-density allowances are needed to meet the economic realities of development. And just, like I said, it's scattered throughout the document, these recommendations, but just one specific example, so you can get a visual pulled out of Section C2 of the NRS, where it says, I'll just kind of paraphrase, where it says, "Presently is not possible under the city's density restrictions to develop housing above retail and densities needed to support upscale shops, nor is it possible to build mixed-income housing and densities needed to breathe new life into commercial corridors." And another important discussion to have when we talk about density is related to design. Basically, when you look at when the current density maximums were enacted, that was before the city had really any kind of architectural or site design controls in place. So, and by that I mean architectural, site design, any kind of aesthetic concerns. And then 2003, and then subsequently in 2007, the city did adopt some standards such as that, that are currently on the books that do regulate architecture, site design, things of that nature. And those are both applicable to multifamily and mixed-use, as well as commercial development in the city. And looking at specific examples when we're talking about design, these four are just a few of the examples in the city where you look at multifamily. I don't think there's any mixed-use here, but multifamily that were built under current or prior density maximums, where there were no design controls in place. And then this is just an example of something that the Architectural and Site Design Manual promotes and essentially mandates with any kind of multifamily or mixed-use development. So the bar has really been kind of raised in terms of design as it relates to multifamily, mixed-use, and commercial. And this is a little more complicated, but on to another subject within this density zoning code amendment. The planned mixed-use district also has the 16 dwelling units per acre maximum. There is a provision in there that basically mandates a proportionate decrease in allowed residential density as there is an increase in commercial or mixed-use land area or building footprint. Staff initially presented the ordinance to Planning Commission to eliminate this language with this calculation without these decreases for density. But Planning Commission did recommend approval of the ordinance as it stands today in terms of how you calculate density and PMUD, but increasing the density from 16 to 21. And staff did do some fairly detailed research on surrounding jurisdictions related to density, still fairly anecdotally, but in looking at comparable jurisdictions, the average base zone district, meaning not a planned development, but like the equivalent R3 that we talked about, the density average was 31 dwelling units per acre. And it's important to note that in these cities looked at, planned developments typically, and I think in all cases, allow higher densities than this, actually. So that just looked at base zone districts. And then also, many of you are probably aware that Wheat Ridge is the only city that has density maximums in the charter, at least of the 16 that we looked at. And just for a visual, you can kind of see where the city Wheat Ridge falls in terms of density in its base zone districts. It has pretty significantly the lowest density among all of these cities that we looked at for base zone districts. So there are basically three motions in your staff report, two of which, one of them is tabling it indefinitely, but the first two are the ones that we want you to, of course, take a closer look at. The first one would be approval of the ordinance, increasing the density from 16 dwelling units per acre to 21 dwelling units per acre, and retaining the density calculations in the PMUD zone district, which is what Planning Commission voted on. The second motion would be approval of the ordinance, increasing the density from 16 to 21, eliminating those density calculations in the PMUD district. So basically keeping it consistent with how the language reads in the planned residential and planned hospital, in terms of how you calculate the dwelling units per acre. And then the third, of course, is to table it indefinitely. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the attached ordinance on February 9, 2009. And that concludes my presentation. I will open it up to questions.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Please step forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address.
Thomas Lattery, S.L.A.T.T.E.R.Y., 6869 West 32nd Avenue. I don't have a problem with 21 units to the acre. I think that was agreed on in the charter, and as I say, that's fine. I don't like the double-count provision, and I'm glad the Planning Commission has recommended against it. So if you don't understand what that meant was, you could use the area of the footprint of the commercial use in calculating the allowable density of the residential units. And the Planning Commission did not recommend that, and I don't recommend it. And there were other speakers at the commission that did not recommend it. I don't know why you want to table it, it seems to me, if it's an ordinance on the line, vote on it. And beyond that, I have no problem with the ordinance as it's proposed tonight in accordance with the Planning Commission recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks from the public to speak? We'll move on to council questions and discussion. Mr. Womble?
This is for staff. I'm a little concerned about the math calculations in the mixed-use development. As I understand it, Planning Commission, basically the first motion that we can look at tonight, they've basically kind of eliminated that problem. Would that be a correct statement?
The Planning Commission eliminated the staff recommendation to simplify the density calculation.
And the reason for my concern would be that, basically, the charter could be skirted by preventing, you know, by pretending that a commercial is not part of a total build-out. So I will be supporting the Planning Commission's. If any other motion comes up, I will not be supporting.
Mr. Dahl, did you want to make any statements on the charter versus the code and the calculations?
Sure. The charter section is specific only to residential construction and single-family units. It doesn't mention commercial at all. Doesn't mention really any other uses. The focus intent and the whole scope of that charter section is residential density. And it's clear. It says 21 units per acre. Says you can't slice property off later after you've built half of a site and then build the other half and double-dip in that context. But it restricts its scope and its control to residential development. It doesn't, in my opinion, restrict residential over commercial. If you still are at 21 dwelling units per acre, that's what you've done on that site, and that's consistent with the charter. My support staff recommendation, the key is that it references the 21 dwelling unit per acre limitation. And there's no question that no project can come in and not comply with the charter. The charter applies. And there's nothing really council could do, even if it tried to, in the code to set aside that limitation. So, you know, it's, I think, important to recognize the charter section is specific to residential development. That's its sole focus.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Berry?
It seems like what we're talking about is whether you calculate density, you know, gross or net density, whether you include the whole parcel that's being considered or only part of the parcel that's being considered for the maximum density. You know, my recollection when we've looked at these before is normally when staff comes to us, they come with an evaluation of both net and gross density when we consider an application. So we look at both those things when we're considering whether to approve a zoning request or not. The other thing would be, this would be something that's a maximum allowable density. That does not mean that everybody that comes in and asks for a planned mixed-use development would be allowed 21 units per acre. Is that correct?
Absolutely. You know, let's be clear, the charter limitation is a maximum. And while the charter doesn't refer to the fact that you've got to comply with the other requirements in the code, you do. And it's well-known that any time you have a maximum density in a zone district, that's the maximum under the charter. But then when you bring in that particular site, and you've got parking, you've got a drainage, and you've got setbacks, and you've got height restrictions, those will determine within that maximum limit what your real density is. And very often, it's less because of the fact that sites just have to require parking and stuff. You can't, so the net that you end up with, as you say, is usually a different number. It certainly can't be greater than the 21, and very often, it's less just because of the site constraints.
So regardless whatever the maximum density is, someone is going to have to show, they're going to have to mitigate all the impacts and follow all the rules, have adequate parking, whatnot, and to be able to get anything approved.
Yes, those are the requirements of the land use code, and those aren't set aside by the charter. They work together.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from council? I just had one quick question, Mr. Dahl. I'll pass the gavel real quick. Properties that are currently rezoned or zoned planned mixed-use, like 38th and Depew, the one that we rezoned a few years back, do they assume these new characteristics? Does that zone district assume the new characteristics?
Well, that's now the maximum in that zone district. And so if, for example, I wanted to buy that site and redevelop it, my maximum on redevelopment would be 21. And again, as was pointed out earlier, I'd have to comply with all of the other requirements, and I don't know if I'd be able to get more density or not. But if I wanted to redevelop that site, that would be the maximum I could achieve.
Right. So the point is, any property owner doesn't have to change anything to come back in and get a rezone again. That's covered.
That's correct.
All righty. Any other comments or questions from council before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Council Bill Number 11-2009, Case ZOA 0901, an ordinance amending Article III of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws concerning residential density in planned development districts on second reading and that take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. The amendment aligns the zoning code with the city's charter relative to residential density in planned development districts. The amendment implements recommendations from the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, which has been adopted as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. The amendment may assist in making desirable projects more economically viable in the city with the following conditions. Residential density shall be calculated based on overall lot area in the planned mixed-use district, just as it is calculated in other planned development districts, thus eliminating the last three sentences of Section 26 306.5e in accordance with the Attachment 4 of this staff report for Council Bill 11-2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval of item number two, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please pull the council.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Womble voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three is Resolution 22-2009. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 22-2009, a resolution declaring that tract A of the re-subdivision of a portion of Fruitvale Valley subdivision shall be used for street purposes. Executive summary. The city has a contract to purchase approximately 1.5 acres of property from Allen and George Williams to facilitate the expansion of the municipal maintenance facility. The Williams's property on Perfett Street may be subdivided to create a lot that the city is purchasing. To facilitate the Williams subdivision, named the Pumpkin Patch subdivision, there must be access to West 46th Avenue. The original plating of West 46th Avenue at this location has included a one-foot tract of land to prevent street access to the rear of the Williams's property. The tract must be declared street right-of-way to allow the subdivision as a subdivision is currently drawn.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 22-2009, declaring that tract A of the re-subdivision of a portion of Fruitvale Valley subdivision shall be used for street purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Rotola. Discussion on the main motion. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item four is Resolution 23-2009. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 23-2009, a resolution in support of the Regional Transportation District, RTD Board of Directors, proceeding with the Eagle P3 Public-Privet Partnership Project. Executive summary. Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Sang ask that this item be placed on the agenda. The dramatic rise in commodity prices since 2004, in combination with the recent severe economic downturn, has resulted in a shortfall of $2.2 billion to complete FastTrax. The completion of FastTrax, as originally approved by the voters in 2004, is a priority for the entire metropolitan area. It is critical that all municipalities stay united on the FastTrax issue. It is ultimately the decision of the RTD Board to determine the course of FastTrax in the face of the shortfall. The assurance by the RTD Board of Directors of a request for proposal for the Eagle P3 project. Motion?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 23-2009, a resolution supporting the Regional Transportation District, RTD Board of Directors, proceeding with the Eagle P3 project.
Second. Second.
A motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing, honer. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Not tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
I just want to repeat what I said at the last council meeting, reminding citizens, staff, anybody interested, that I am attending the Green Cities Conference this weekend and next week in Portland, Oregon. I've had some conversations with some people. I understand there's a lot of people interested in this subject, so I welcome a phone call or an email to have a conversation before I attend. You know, I'd like to hear some other thoughts and ideas that people are thinking about, perhaps some things that I might even be able to look for when I'm there, and to bring back as many resources as I can. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Womble?
Yes, I would just like to send out a real huge thank you to the Quanis Club and also Parks and Rec that facilitated the Easter egg hunt this past Saturday. Great turnout. I couldn't believe it, just tons of young families, kids of all age groups, aging from anywhere from one-year-old all the way up to nine. And they had all kinds of eggs out in the grass, and I couldn't believe it. All the eggs were gone in less than two minutes. It was just amazing.
Thank you. Councilmember Langworthy?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brought to my attention that we need to pass something this evening that it... this evening that inadvertently was not on the agenda. And it is, as a part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, the Office of Community-Oriented Policing has announced the availability of grant funding to address the sworn police officer needs of local, state, and global law enforcement. Hope I got that right. Up to $1 billion in funding is available through this grant. This grant provides 100% funding for approved entry-level salaries and benefits for three years for newly hired, full-time sworn officers' positions. This is a competitive grant process. The police department has identified two positions for grant funding, a school resource officer for our middle school SRO program, and a vice intelligent officer position. So with that explanation, I move to direct the police department to prepare and submit the required grant paperwork to the Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services, requesting two full-time sworn officer positions.
Second.
We have a motion, seconded by Councilmember Womble. Discussion on the main motion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
One other thing. And I am sorry to say that I will be resigning from the Wheat Ridge Business District position, and I have a conflict on the day that they hold that monthly meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, please try to do a positive thing in your community for your neighbors in the community, around the community, through the community. But always try to look and see if you can help somebody that needs help. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Berry?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Rotola?
I just want to add to Mr. Womble's comments on the Easter egg hunt. I had an opportunity to go to it. I was in the area, so decided I'd run by. And it was really amazing. Those little kids got so excited, lots of eggs, and they had a great time. So kudos to the Quanis and the Parks Department. They do a wonderful job. And don't forget, food banks need a lot of help, so please help out. There's a lot of needy people out there.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. This evening, the city of Wheat Ridge officially launched its new video streaming technology, which makes Wheat Ridge TV Channel A programming accessible to citizens via the city's website, online, and on-demand. The city of Wheat Ridge has made open government a priority by funding initiatives that enhance communication with our citizens. We are excited about this new website feature as further example of our ongoing efforts to increase public input and involvement in government. Citizens can now access Wheat Ridge TV Channel A programming with the click of a mouse by visiting www.ci.wheatridge.co.us and clicking on the link titled Wheat Ridge TV Live and On-Demand Videos. Currently, the city televises the regular city council and planning commission meetings. These meetings can be accessed live at their regularly scheduled time. Additionally, citizens can access scheduled meetings of the Citizens Budget Oversight Committee. In the coming days, archives of other Channel A programs, such as the city's Top of the Hour, Metro Voices, Off the Page, and Let's Talk programming, will also be made available to website users. The city is very excited about this new technology as this one of our website enhancements that the city has been looking forward to since the launch of our new website in last December. For more information, please contact Heather Geier, Assistant to the City Manager/Public Information Officer, at 303-235-2826. It really is a neat feature on our website, so I encourage everybody to pass it along to your friends. If you, they don't have access to Channel Eight on Comcast, they could actually go to our website now and see the meetings live or archived on the website. And also, I wanted to mention that the Wheat Ridge Business District appointment that Councilmember Sang held is a council appointment, and that could be either a city council person or a citizen from the community to be appointed. And that's a at-large position, basically. So if anybody's interested in serving on the Wheat Ridge Business District, please let myself know, or actually John Marriott, he's the board president at Larson Ski &amp; Sports, and then we can go from there. But council would have to make that appointment sometime soon. So with that, we're adjourned.